We call a meeting to order. It's six thirty on Monday, February the eighth. And this is the committee of the whole administration and finance for the Corporation of the Township of Edensburg Cardinal. And so this is our February meeting. And next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I'd like to call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Hunter seconded by Counselor Cameron that the agenda be approved as presented. Those in favor? Motion is carried. Item number three on the agenda is disclosure of community interests and the general needs or thereof. Are there any disclosures here this evening with any of the items on the agenda? Chair notes that there were no disclosures in the minutes will so reflect. I'm going to deal just for a minute with business arising from the previous committee of the whole meeting. And that's the meeting of, I guess, it's January the eleventh. So, does anyone want to bring forward any questions or business arising from those minutes?
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I'll recognize Counselor Dillabaw and then Counselor Cameron. Counselor Dillabaw, page reference, please.
Page four ninety-one.
Page four ninety-one, go ahead.
Almost to the bottom, members note the staff may follow up with the South Nation Conservation Prevent Potential Water Purification Grants. Available for the Druststown Drainage Project. Do the chair to the C O. Have we looked into that or anything?
The C O.
Through the chair, nothing additional to report at this time.
Okay, and to, we'll just call it Counselor Hunter, our representative on South Nation, just to see if there's been any meetings since the last time where you may have had an opportunity.
We have another meeting, next meeting is on the eighteenth, nine o'clock in the morning. And I'll see if there's a chance I can inquire about it there, but it is evaluation of the general manager takes place at that for the camera session, so I think there's a big portion of that need to set aside for the staff evaluations type thing that they do, so I'm due to what they sent me a checklist of everything we're supposed to report off to them there. But I haven't got a, I haven't given the agenda yet from the meeting.
Okay, well, the
I'm trying to grant, get a, find a place or is there an inquiry again, our inquiry, or any inquiry required if there's any grants.
Yeah, well, if there's any staff that you can contact, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
That's the gist of the question, is there any grants available? You might be able to deal with staff.
I'll get a hold of the hand maybe tomorrow, so she can look into it.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes, on page five of ninety-one, about the middle, under the bullet points. And it'll be the sixth bullet point down, Counselor Cameron noted the Cardinal may have to pay additional money towards water and wastewater levies. I also did say that my number, numbers on that were two and a half to three percent. Does that could just be corrected?
Oh, I see.
You asked us all for numbers for the budget, or the, for the budget, the tax rate. And everyone gave numbers, I gave two and a half to three percent max, but, and I did make mention that my numbers were two point five to three because of the levy that was, that was also going into the
Okay, so we'll have the, we'll have the minutes amended to just indicate your response to the original question.
Correct.
At two and a half to three percent. And so I guess we've already approved the minutes. I think we've approved them as circulated. So, yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we did. Well, not at this meeting, but they were approved at a previous meeting, according to the agenda that I have in front of you. Because I'm not, I'm not dealing with approval of the minutes, I'm just dealing with business arising from those minutes. Now, where those minutes showed up to be approved, I'm not sure. To the clerk, maybe if I can go to the clerk and just see what meeting we approved the minutes of that meeting, which was January the eleventh. So through the C O to the clerk. Where did we
Through the chair, they were approved at a regular council meeting on January twenty-fifth.
Okay, so they're already approved, Counselor, sorry.
Okay, well, anyway, for everyone's information around the council table, that my, my response to the question is to an act.
Okay, so that's noted. Now, is there any other business arising? I just have one small item. Seeing no other hands, I'll go last then. On page one of ninety-one. And page one of ninety-one, at item number four, just the first paragraph. We, I believe it was myself, it always says members, but it actually was myself, inquired about an update to reviewing the possibility of including Totem Ranch Road rehabilitation in the two thousand and twenty-one budget. It was noted that staff are in discussions with North Grenville Operations Department to review the site and develop a go-forward plan. So through, it's from the chair then to the C O. Can you tell us if there has been any discussion about Totem Ranch Road East, it's Totem Ranch Road East? Has there been any discussion at all with North Grenville, either about this year or next year?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There hasn't been the formal meeting yet, but I believe that is scheduled in the next, in the next month or so. It would, it would look to be a two thousand and twenty-two project.
All right.
At least being proposed that way.
All right, so can we get an update then as a result of those discussions? After they occur?
Certainly, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay, if there's no, are there any other, is there any other business arising? Hearing none then, I'm about to move on. Item number five on the agenda is delegations and presentations. We have none on the agenda tonight, and so I'm moving to item number six on the agenda, which is a discussion item concerning the Drainage Act changes. Now, the intent here was to support South Nation Conservation. And there is a bit of a resolution, a draft resolution here that we're hoping to bring forward to council at the end of the month. The resolution speaks for itself, I'm not going to read it, but you can see that the ministry is, is proposing some changes to the regulations. Now, I'm going to go first to Counselor Hunter. And Counselor Hunter, is this, is this robust enough support for the South Nation position?
Well, I think this is pretty well what they've put forward to me, that I've seen for, for them, I think this is their position on, they're more worried about engineering part, they're, they're really worried, worried about bringing up. The one thing I think that I intend to bring up with them again, that whenever we get talking about it again, I think we should be aware of it too, is that all they talk about in this drainage thing that I can see is reading through it. They're, they're totally fixed on, on already established municipal drains. How to repair them, how to advance them, there's nothing in here that I've seen so far that makes it any easier to establish a new municipal drain or convert what we called the award ditches years ago to municipal drains. There's still a long, all I can see, it's still that long, great, dead progress of everybody from here to try to get a sale over a ditch bin.
Well
They've eliminated it here, that they're pulling it back down to just the exact stakeholders
And, and that
Engineering of it.
There's no question about it, because that was the focus, the focus was the Drainage Act doesn't exist.
Yeah, there's nothing, nothing to I'm disappointed with the ministry, and I know South Nation can't, there's nothing in there, man, they can try to change, bring in new
Differentation.
They can comment on stuff being presented, but I think that it's something we should be presenting that we see some change in the Drainage Act as forsay of making it easier to establish municipal drains.
Well, I mean, the point is that in addition to supporting the position that's taken by South Nation on these three points. I mean, we could very well add a rationale clause or a, or even an operative clause that would, would request that the changes to the Drainage Act include provisions to make it easier to convert an award drain to a municipal drain. I mean, if you wanted to draft that kind of a clause to get it into this motion, this motion will come before council, depending on the discussions here tonight, will come before council at the end of February. So if you wanted to get another rationale clause or another operative clause in here, you could do that.
I don't know whether it's advisable to, to add, because we're back in South Nation to get what they're, we're trying on this. But we should maybe just put a different motion forward and leave this, but we're full support, we have this, we also would like something else, so.
Okay, I get your point, so I'll leave that up to you, Counselor, or Deputy Mayor.
Going back to conversation we had with Minister Sakaria about red tape reduction. And in the discussion we had with him, he said that we, they're, they want to consider ways to reduce red tape as far as the Drainage Act goes, so, so, you know, why not support the South Nation one? And that as long as, you know, what we do for red tape reduction doesn't conflict with what we've already submitted, let's, let's do something that way as well. And we'll kind of work, work with both of those.
Okay, so my suggestion would be that the two of you get together and put together a separate motion and perhaps get it on the discussion item for the P W meeting next Monday night. And then, depending on how that discussion goes, both motions could come at the end of the month. Okay? Okay, and you want it in?
Yeah, I just, I, I, I'm glad South Nation is here to oversee this, but my, my concern is, is when they refer to minor improvements. Who says that that project is minor? Is it, is South Nation involved in it, or is it left to the, is it left to the stakeholder who's, who says, oh gee, I just have to put in a forty-five foot culvert, but it's minor?
Well
So I, that, that's where I'm concerned, about who deems these things minor or major?
Well
And I didn't, I went through, quickly through the, through the act, I just didn't pick anything up, so if I've missed something, I've missed something. I just, I just didn't see it.
Okay, well, I think the point that they're making here is that there already is a process for minor improvements to drains. But the process, and so within the act, it describes what minor improvements are. And then if it's deemed to be a minor improvement, within the act, there's a process. And what this is asking for is a simplified process to deal with minor improvements. But I think minor improvements are already determined by the act or by the engineer.
If it's by the engineer, I'll swill by that, yeah.
I think it also gives, in the new graph, there, there gives municipality more say in what we consider municipality as one of the final saves on where they deem it minor. And that went through the process, but before, the municipality didn't have any, it was totally the engineer that decided. However, now, South Nation Conservation Authority and the host municipality had, had a big say in where it's a minor.
Okay, so is that another issue that's being clarified here?
I think from what I talked to, sent her, I keep forgetting her name, they were talking to the other, sent us the letter, there, Sandra?
Sandra, yeah, Sandra Mancini, yeah.
Yeah, she, they think they got that pretty well. That it's going to be worked out, and it's just, it's not just going to be an engineer comes in and say, no, no, I think I need to engineer this. Municipality and South Nation is going to have more say in, oh, if you're adding ten feet on the culvert, that doesn't need to be engineered. South Nation will, will have an oversight on it as to environmental and stuff on it, and township will issue the permits for
See, see, in the other processes, when there was a change to the, to the Drainage Engineers' report, the process goes back to public hearings, approval of the budget, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And what they're saying is if you're dealing with a municipal drain where it's already a three million dollar project, to make a change on a thirty thousand dollar culvert, you don't need to go back to public hearings and it's all of that kind of thing, you just need a simplified process. I think that's the gist of this.
That's the gist of South Nation.
That's what they have here, Mr. Mayor, the new, that's what they have here, we can sign off on as a municipality.
Yes.
And on to the other.
It won't have all the public meetings, the engineers, and two engineers come in and decide, probably.
Okay, so this resolution, this motion will be coming forward at the, at the council meeting of, at the end of the month. Counselor Hunter, you'll be moving the motion. And so, Mr. C O and the clerk, if you would note that this will be, this motion will be coming forward sponsored by Counselor Hunter. He'll be looking for a secondar at the meeting. I think we've had enough discussion on it, everybody understands the gist of it and what the intent is. And as well, Counselor Hunter and Deputy Mayor Deschamp will work on another motion to, to see if we can get changes so that our award drains can be converted to municipal drains. All right, and if you can get that motion before the Public Works Committee, we can have a discussion of it as well. Okay, if there's no other questions, I'm moving on. No further discussion, okay, that's the motion that's come forward then. And so now I'm at item number seven on the agenda. And item number seven A is an application for a community improvement plan funding from Spencerville Pharmisave. Now ordinarily, these kinds of things would have gone to the Community Development Committee. But it's a relatively straightforward application. But in the absence of the community, I believe that staff that has final jurisdiction here, is it not? We've devolved a responsibility to staff, but it comes to Community Development Committee for information, or does Community Development Committee make the final decisions?
So typically, it would be committee and council that would make that final decision, counsel.
Committee and council? Okay, so you all understand, or you have the briefing note in front of you, there is a recommendation. The chair is looking for a motion to execute the, I'll leave it up to you then.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move the recommendation that the committee approves the application, reimbursing fifty percent of the actual cost to complete the property improvements to a maximum of five thousand.
All right, and is, you're going to second, seconded by Counselor Dillabaw. Is there any further discussion on the recommendation?
Happy to have Pharmisave here.
Say again?
Happy to have Pharmisave in Spencerville.
Yes.
Do we know the date of when the plan officially opened?
Do you know the date?
I'll look it up as we're going on and, and tell you, but yeah, it's soon, it's, yeah, it's very soon, I think the sixteenth. I have it, I have it in my mind that he posted the sixteenth, but I'll have to look back and see.
Okay, and I, I don't know if he's made any progress with an ATM machine or not, it's another question. I'm about to call the question on the recommendation. Those in favor? Motion is carried. So now I'm at item number seven B, which is PDF remediation software. And staff is seeking authorization to purchase Equidox software. I've already seen the briefing note, there is a recommendation with the briefing note. Chair is looking for a mover and a secondar to action the briefing note. Counsel, Mr. Bradley moving, and Counselor Hunter seconding. Counselor Hunter seconding. Is there any further discussion on this briefing note or this recommendation? Hearing none, I'm about to call the question. Those in favor? Motion is carried.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, are, are you seeing me?
I am not, where are you? Give me a wave.
I'm not hiding.
Where are you?
Turn your video on.
Is your, is your video
There you go. Hey, how are you doing?
Now give, now give me a wave. All right, now, if you, you should, you should, if you're in a quiet place, you can leave your audio on. And then if I'm not recognizing you, just speak up.
Yes, that's what I'm doing.
Okay, my apologies, Mr. Robertson, I should have asked at the beginning of the meeting if you were with us, so my apologies.
Well, I, I was until the C E O made an adjustment and then I disappeared. But I didn't know whether you were still seeing me or not.
Oh, the next question is, can you see us?
Yes, I can, yes.
All right, so now, go ahead. Okay, so now I'm at seven C, which is the fourth quarter building report and the vacant and abandoned buildings update. So you have the briefing note in front of you. The fourth quarter building report, I think there's some interesting statistics in there concerning building fees and, and construction values. And I believe that this long sheet is the sheet that goes with it. And it's interesting to note that we have twenty-three new residential units constructed during the year at a cost of six and a half million dollars compared to thirteen units last year at a cost of two point two million dollars. And it's also interesting to note that we have had ten million dollars of new construction. Although that is a little bit less than the eleven million dollars of new construction last year. So, interesting information. And on page thirty-seven of ninety-one, you have a paragraph there kind of giving you the report on the abandoned and vacant buildings. Are there any questions with this report? Counselor Dillabaw first, and then Mr. Bradley, Counselor Dillabaw.
Yeah, just, I guess, because I think I know the answer, but seventeen new resident, residential building permits were issued and it created twenty-six residential units. Obviously, it must have been apartments in that?
Well, we already know it, there's four on David Street, don't we?
Yeah, but what I'm saying is twenty-six, we got twenty-six building permits, yeah, I guess so, that'd be one building permit, which would give four, four different, okay, you're right, yes, I And that's what it is, or someone's trying to make a high Yeah, duplexes gives four.
Mr. Bradley.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, through the chair to the C O. It is clarification only for me. The new homes is six point four eight million, and the total residential is eight point one two million. And so I guess, this was the difference between that extra, you know, one point six billion or whatever that's there, is that like renovations?
That's, that's correct.
The granny suites and things of that sort.
Grad, residential grades, if you want to, yeah.
Sheds and grandias and stuff like that.
Yeah, that's correct.
That's quite a bit of money that's spent in kind of not major construction, isn't it?
Well, if you're building a fifty thousand dollar garage, it's kind of hard to pocketbook.
I know. That too, it's when you start looking at the present. Okay, thanks, I'm hungry, let's come for me.
Counselor Dillabaw.
On the abandoned vacant buildings, four, six, seven, so we only have eight that are in bad shape, vacant, or that we know of, or is it, or is there, is a building inspector still working on, other ones?
So, yeah, through, through, through the chair, as, certainly as time permits, the, the building inspector is still working on, on those.
And others too?
And others as well.
Okay, I just thought maybe that's all we had in the whole town chair.
Well, we don't know that answer.
No.
Yeah, I hope we do know it.
Your pardon?
We do know it. There's a lot more than that.
Are there any other questions with this report?
I have a
Go ahead.
I don't know, however, it's really, this report is more of through the chair to the C O where it actually fits in, I know the building, building inspector has the right, right, given the right inspect and demand repairs on, on totally abandoned buildings, what about some of the buildings that we have in the township that are in almost condemned, is that coming under the building inspector to enforce repairs to these buildings if they're getting that bad of a shape, or who, who does that, is that bylaw, or is that building inspector that's got to go and say this is a dangerous structure?
So, so through, so through the chair, typically that would fall to the building inspector. There's, there would be an order for, to remedy an unsafe building, items like that. So, that power falls within the, within the building inspector's realm.
Okay, I'll come in and have a discussion with him and that.
Do you have other, do you have buildings that
Well, I think we all know, but there's a couple of them that that need to be done with, so.
Well, I know at the beginning of this, and I'm going to go to Counselor Cameron next, because Counselor Cameron was one of the pushes behind this bylaw. And I know that shortly after the bylaw was approved, I know there was a list of ten properties that were brought to the attention of the building official, and it looks like we've got four, eight, five, it looks like we've got eight, and which suggests to me that, well, working on those are ten, but I don't know that, but Counselor Cameron. And, and you're indicating that you have several that you
Well, I have one in particular that I've heard a lot of complaints about here in Spencerville, and I think pretty near time something's thrown at it, so.
Okay, and what we don't know at this point in time is whether that property is on the list to be looked at.
Well, it wouldn't be on the list for vacant, so if not vacant.
Okay, but, okay, so, okay, I see what you're saying, doesn't really fall, fall under abandoned or vacant, but it's, it's just an issue building. So Counselor Cameron, is this what you were looking for with your bylaw?
Well, I, to be quite truthful, yeah, it, it's a start, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to see if, if there are others on a, on a quarterly basis as to what is, is to, I'd like, I'd like to know all that he has. In other words, if he has ten or twelve or fourteen, I'd like to know that there's fourteen that are in his awareness of the situation, and then I mean, this spells out what's being done for these ones, but what's being done with the other ones.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, chair is looking for a motion to receive this report, to have a mover to receive the report. I'm going to take Mr. Bradley, and I'm going to take Counselor Hunter that the report be received. Further discussion, hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
All that motion carried. Sorry, Mr. Bradley, Mr. Robertson.
But I heard you.
All right, it's a small, it's a small screen, so when I wave, I wave off to the side.
Okay, so now I'm at item seven B, which is the fourth quarter bylaw report. Page thirty-nine of ninety-one, and I believe it goes on for a number of pages beyond that. So are there any questions with this report?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead. So I have this minute, let me just see if I have any other speakers. I have Mr. Bradley, are there any other speakers to this report, questions coming forward? Deputy Mayor Deschamp, any other speakers?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Cameron, any, any others? Mr., okay, Counselor Dillabaw, and Mr. Robertson, your hand. Okay, so my speakers are Mr. Bradley, Deputy Mayor Deschamp, Counselor Cameron, and Mr. Counselor Dillabaw. Mr. Bradley, you're first.
Okay, so looking at page thirty-nine, it's just kind of the summary. It indicates thirty snow warning letters, this is again, just kind of a clarification thing for me. What, like, what's the point at which you get a snow warning letter? Like, you got a mound of snow, and you haven't cleaned out the Like, you got a mound of snow, and you haven't cleaned out the sidewalk, or?
I suspect that it's, uh, notices posted on cars that are parked overnight, but I'll go to the C A O.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, that, that is, that is correct. Uh, typically in December, uh, the parking restrictions are in place, and provide usually a letter on the, on the waiver as a reminder to be off, off the street.
So, the, these parking, whatever's, uh, prevent the snowplow from, if not?
Correct, correct.
Okay, and then moving on to the next part of my question. I see the parking infractions are thirty-seven. And so, it's kind of a, my beginning question is, can we ticket these parking violations?
So, through the chair, that, that is correct, we can.
Like, we can put a ticket on the window?
That is correct.
So, is, and I haven't referred, gone back to the bylaw, but there must be some process by which we, uh, go through to do that, right? Like, first offense or second?
No, that's the warning letters.
Yeah, so, yeah.
So, this thirty-seven is warning letters, isn't it?
No, so if, 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 if I may, typically, uh, what, once the, uh, uh, parking restrictions are in place, we, we take the opportunity to go around and, uh, uh, issue reminders, uh, as, as, as opposed to automatically ticketing. And, uh, and if, uh, if some of those, um, vehicles still persist, and it is into an actual snowfall event, then, then it would typically be, be, be ticketed. And I'll, I'll sort of defer to the, to the clerk, just to clarify if I've missed anything in that end of it.
I know you are correct in that process. We do try to, um, allow for a little leniency at the very beginning of the, uh, winter snowfall year, uh, to provide people with a friendly reminder and public education before we issue the first round of tickets.
So, so if I'm the resident of Cardinal, I don't have a driveway and have a car, is there, like, how do I handle that?
Find a spot.
So, it's up to me to find a vacant spot and that's within the bylaw restriction.
Yeah.
That's, uh, that's all I have, thank you very much.
Uh, my, just a, a simple, a simple question about numbers going through. It just seems very disproportionate, and, and so through, through the mayor to the C A O, if there's an explanation for the disproportionate, um, grouping of numbers, sixty-one in Cardinal, seventeen in Spencerville, and eleven in Johnson.
So, through, through the chair, I guess I'll ask the deputy mayor for a little bit more clarity, like, with respect to a particular item, or just generally speaking?
Generally speaking. Okay. Just seems that, I mean, are there more infr- is there just more infractions in Cardinal? Is there more enforcement in Cardinal? Um, this is a, you know, six to one.
Well, I'd, I'd love to jump in here, I mean, there's no question that we have, over the past number of years, been putting, uh, a little bit more pressure, uh, to get a number of things, uh, brought under control in Cardinal, and a lot of that is coming from the residents themselves. Uh, I'm still getting calls about quite a number of, uh, properties that are not up to snuff. And I also get calls about cars parked overnight. So, uh, no question, I, I do refer those calls to the office here, and I assume that they're followed up, so. Uh, part of it can be because of the, the calls that come to me that I refer back. There's no question, and I mean, I, I don't know the situation in Spencerville at all. Does the, uh, no overnight parking bylaw apply in Spencerville?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, okay, do we get complaints in Spencerville?
I, I, I would anticipate if we have any complaints that, that they're followed up with. But it's also, uh, on, on, on a, on a snow event, if, if the bylaw officer is out, and there's, um, twenty-five vehicles in, in, in the village of Cardinal that are, that are parked, uh, on, on the street, that's, that's twenty-five, and if there's two in Spencerville, there, there's, you know, two that are taken to there, right? That, you know, to, to, to me, that explains some disproportion, because that's, in, in that particular event, there's twenty-three, you know, uh, different, right?
Okay, any, okay, I'm still going down my list here, I'll add you Counselor Hunter, but I have Counselor Cameron next, and then Counselor Dillabaw.
Yes, uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of my, some of my concerns were, were answered in the, the previous, uh, previous discussions, but, uh, I, I, I'd just like to point out that there's a total of seventy calls per service, and thirty-seven of them were, uh, were, uh, were parking infractions. That's over fifty percent, uh, of, uh, of the, of the, of the calls that, uh, I, and, and of that at this time of the year, broken down as to what was winter, uh, winter infraction or, or whatever. Um, so, I, 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 it looks to me by the, by these numbers that there's an awful lot of time spent on, uh, on parking, uh, issues. I didn't know we had that big a problem, but, however. We have what we have.
Well, maybe the question through the chair, uh, the question might be, how many parking tickets have we actually issued?
Not too many.
Oh, what?
Eighteen.
The clerk, uh, are you able to respond to that?
Eighteen, if you please. If you call them a summons.
Yeah, I just, by.
It, it, so, let me just jump in here, because I think we have a, a sort of a, a blank spot. So, is, is Counselor Dillabaw correct in interpreting this report that we have in front of us? Page forty-two of ninety-one. Is Counselor Dillabaw correct in, when he goes to the far right column, which is labeled summons, and he goes to the bottom of the column and he sees eighteen for parking violations? Is that eighteen tickets issued in Cardinal? Through the C A, to, to the chair, to the C A O, the C A O to the clerk, I think, when we all, Cardinal.
No, there's someone, Spencer. Go, go ahead, Rebecca.
Yeah, we're waiting, Rebecca.
Sorry, through the chair, I didn't know if you recognized my hand or not. Um, yes, those would all be parking tickets, infractions issued for the fourth quarter.
Eighteen is the total number of issued, and then we have to look to see which, where they were.
Correct.
Look to the left a little bit. Okay, does that answer your question, Counselor? That answer your question?
I didn't, I didn't ask for it.
Somebody did.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, and you, you had an issue then?
Uh, yeah, uh, I just have, again, we go through this, so, you know, we go four visits, four visits, four visits. One notice. I mean, how many times do we go before we say, well, here's an order? Because he's gonna be, he's got four here now, and cleaning the air, because he's got two more visits, I'm sure, before he gives them an order. Like, that's six times visiting a home. I guess, you know, so, to me, we're so inconsistent. I, I don't know how to, I brought that up before, so.
Thank you, through, through, through the chair. Uh, if, if, uh, the, the bylaw enforcement for, we'll, we'll, we'll say compliance officer, uh, goes to a site, uh, and speaks with the owner, and the owner is making some progress, we, we, we wouldn't necessarily go to a notice. We'd go for another site visit, see progress, trying to work with the, the owner or the individual, get into compliance, as opposed to going, once, once you go down the, the, the notice and the ticketing end of it, it typically ends up extending the, uh, the, the, the progress, the, the process even longer.
Can I ask your question, Counselor? Any other questions, any other questions with this report? Any other questions with this report?
I just have a comment on, Mayor. When we, when we look at, uh, being questioned about the parking violation, how come there's so many in Cardinal compared to Spencerville? I don't think for a long ti- time, Cardinal didn't have very strict enforcement on parking on the streets. The old Edrisburg Township before, before amalgamation had a very strict policy in Spencerville that parking on the streets, we didn't just issue a ticket. It was a twenty-five dollar ticket, but the car got towed. And the tow bill was to Nation View Garage, and it was a two hundred dollar tow bill to get the car back. So, it got, we only had maybe, in the first two winters, we maybe had six or seven toes, and, and there were very few cars when they went to plow, parked on the street, because they just two-way radioed my truck, and I called Bernie at the garage, and we get it, oh, the car was towed, you paid to get it back, back from, so. Uh, a notice, we're chewed out, we're awful strict and awful expensive on it, but it only took about one winter and a half, another winter to clear it up, keep it out of cars. But they seen the snow coming, they got the car out the street, trucks didn't have, they waited to plow, because they knew it was going to be an expensive trip, so they didn't have it up. Now, we didn't, if there were no snow, they knew we didn't bother them. But if it was snowing, they knew the car had to get off the street. So, I think that's a little bit of a explanation, maybe takes a while to, if you're just getting a ticket and going through court and waiting to pay your ticket and stuff that's not yours, dramatically, you have to go on, pay two hundred dollars to get your tow, car towed.
Go ahead, Mr. Bradley.
Yes, that's just a comment, uh, that, as Counselor Dillabaw mentioned, we deal with this report kind of on a quarterly basis, and we go through it, and we kind of bring our hands and test our brains as to figure out how we can improve and so on. But it boils down in my mind to sort of a, an optics thing. We have, we would like to see improvement in the community, and, uh, so that becomes kind of a collaborative effort between us and the people, so that they understand what we're, objectives are, and what we're trying to do. And, you know, if we get the heavy hand, we're going to end up on that website that everybody's bitching about, uh, you know, overreaching bylaws or whatever. If we're too light, then we get, um, you know, the issue of, uh, infractions increasing. So, I think it's very difficult, I think we're doing a pretty good job, actually, and I think it's difficult to strike that proper balance, and, uh, it doesn't happen overnight. I think if we work hard at keeping the people involved and up to date in what the objectives are, we'll see progress on these.
Well, then, but then you get to Counselor Dillabaw's question. Uh, you know, you're dealing with four and five visits to each, to certain individuals.
One of the things we don't know, that I can't, at least I haven't been able to figure it out yet, is how many of those infractions are the same person? Like, I think most of us got those emails from Mr. Ladook or whatever that went on and on and on over the period of many months. Uh, it seemed to be the focus of one particular, uh, house or person, family, whatever, that was creating the issue. And now, maybe the other fellow didn't have as much patience or whatever, but if that, if that was only in, like, if, would that case, you know, bring up six or seven of these items on the report? Because we, we don't really know that, I don't think.
Probably brought up about twenty.
So, we don't know how many of these are kind of one-person repeats type of thing?
Well, there are certain, there are certain, um, individuals, and they're well-known to staff.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, I, I, and, and staff is aware of them, because I, I, I get those calls too.
And they're visiting and all that stuff, and so.
But I'd like to go back to Counselor Hunter for a minute. Um, are, are you suggesting, Counselor, that, that, uh, that the old Spencerville parking bylaw, uh, maybe had a, a, a greater deterrent effect than we're having right now?
Well, it certainly had a bigger deterrent effect, that's for sure. Now, whether it was the right, is the right way to go or not, I don't know, but I think it's, uh,
Oh, I don't think so.
A, a case, someplace down the line, and Mr. Counselor Dillabaw says, how many, I see where, uh, the C A O says we're working with them, and every time you go, this thing's improving, that, in, in their yards by law. But when we got plows going around the road, uh, we get a warning, and then we get a ticket. How many tickets can we give to the same person before, before we get a little serious about it here? And the next time you can drive, and the truck's got a stop there, there that he calls, one of the tow trucks, say, and get this car out of my road.
Well, and I don't know that our present bylaw gives us power to tow through the chair to the C A O. Does our present bylaw give us power to tow?
Through the chair, I, I, I would have to confirm, but I, I, I do believe that, that there is the authority to tow.
We don't seem to exercise it.
I don't want to exercise it. I don't want to, that's how I'm, I'm arguing.
Well, I mean, there's, gets to be a point. Counselor?
Yeah, uh, uh, Mr. Mr. Mayor and Counselor Dillabaw, I, I, I concur wholeheartedly with Counselor Hunter. If, if we have a snowfall, and, and cars are parked there, they should be towed. Get, get them out of there. How many times did I look at Dundas Street at the corner near Bridge, just, just to the east? Six cars parked there, snowplows, I had to go around them, out of man. Then, you know, they sat there for two days, they still, they still weren't removed. I agree, they should, they, they should be towed. But where I, but where I'm getting the complaints, I'm not getting complaints really about, about the, 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 the snowfall problems. I think people know that they should get their cars off the road, but if they don't, they shouldn't tow. But I'm getting complaints where somebody pulls into the post office, runs into the post office and comes out, and there's a ticket on his car because he parked the wrong way. That's where, that's the complaints that I'm getting. And I'm also getting, getting complaints from, uh, from senior citizens that have disability stickers on their car, getting tickets, parked the wrong way again. Uh, but they're, but they're, they're getting tickets, so that's where I'm, that's where, where I'm getting the complaints. That's why I'd like to see the parking situation broken up a little more, to tell us what, what was the violation? If, if there was, out of, out of those, uh, thirty-five or thirty, thirty-seven calls, if thirty-six of them were snow issues, all for it, all, all well. But if there, if there's only two snow issues, and, and the rest are, I guess, what you could use the word, I think, uh, parking offense would be, uh, maybe, maybe we're, maybe we're putting our efforts in, in, in an area that doesn't really, doesn't really need to be, need to be done. But anyway, uh, a little more clarification just might, uh, just, just might help.
So, uh, I'm going to call for a motion to receive this report. Before I do, uh, just, uh, mention that, uh, the, the staff has heard the discussion. I think, uh, staff has heard, um, a request for maybe a little bit more, uh, detailed information on some of these reports. Uh, I'm going to be calling for a motion to receive this report, uh, but do you want more, uh, final comment?
I just want a comment to go along with Counselors Ca- Cameron, that, uh, these tickets being handed, handed for somebody parked for a few minutes the wrong way on, on the street in front of the post office, I think there've been a couple handed out here in Spencerville too. It's one way, one, only parking on one side of the street here, if somebody comes up, they have to pull over, whatever. Other side, you drive all the way around the block, parked, wouldn't, didn't get their mail. I think this is a little ridiculous handing tickets out for, because they're parked on the wrong side of the street for fifteen or twenty, twenty minutes. I question whether they're even legal to give them a ticket when they only can park on one, one side of the street, and they don't have the right to cross the street and, and park on the other side, so.
But, a- a- all bylaw officers have discretionary powers, we understand that. I guess what we're really talking about is, uh, the individual's ability to exercise discretion here. That's really what the discussion is about. Uh, I don't want to get into that, because discretion is within the power of the office, if I can put it that way. And, uh, you know, if we don't like the, uh, manner in which the individual exercises discretion, then, uh, I think we have to provide a stronger, uh, direction to staff. Uh, I've heard some concerns, but I haven't heard any, uh, direction coming forward. So, I'm going to. So I'm going to terminate the discussion on this item, looking for a motion to receive the report. Now, Counselor Hunter moving to receive the report. Does he have a second here, Counselor Cameron? And I'm going to call a question on the question, those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. All right, and so now I'm moving to item number seven E, which is the fourth quarter Treasury and Reserve Report. And so there is a briefing note that begins on page forty-eight of ninety-one, and forty-nine of ninety-one, and fifty of ninety-one, it's something different. Let me have a look here, how many pages we've got. So we have the pre-audit financial report of December the thirty-first. There's no page on this, page number on this one, but I think this is a forty-nine. Okay, so it's forty, I don't have a forty-nine on my copy.
No, it isn't, no, there isn't.
And so then on the backside of that page, we have the long-term debt schedule on page fifty of ninety-one. And I'll deal with those two first. So the first one is the pre-audit financial report of December the thirty-first, where you get the comparative numbers on the, the main headings from the balance. Well, it's not a balance sheet, but anyway, you get the main headings. Are there any questions on this page?
Just one, Mr. Mayor, who counts payable as compared to the two thousand and nineteen is down to the two-hundred-thousand-dollar level versus the nine-hundred. Is, is the two-hundred more typical of where we would be at the end of the year?
So through the chair to the C A O, is the, which is more typical, the two-twenty-one or the nine-fifty-three? Through the chair to the treasurer, or to the C A O, to the treasurer?
Through the chair, typically, the two-twenty-one is a little bit more, more indicative of our year-end. The prior twenty-nineteen year was, as a result of our A P clerk was relatively new in that year, and, you know, just still trying to get herself to the point where she was keeping more on top of, of the payables. And so in, in this year, she, she was able to achieve that.
Well, that's, that's quite a swing, and so I think we should, we think we should note that as a commendable achievement.
Yeah, very good.
And are there any other questions with this report?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I got a couple. The accrued landfill closure, that's every year we, we're paying sixty, well, I guess it's gone down, but six grand until when?
Oh, just a minute now, where are you?
On landfill closure.
Accrued, two-seventy-seven.
Sorry, forty-nine, page forty-nine of ninety-one.
Yes, accrued landfill closure is two-seventy-seven?
It's not, it's two what?
Two-seventy-seven.
Yeah, is that, is that forever, ever on that, or?
No, no, that's a, oh, let the treasurer explain, not two-seventy-seven.
Certainly, so it's a liability that's set up as an accrued liability. What we have to do is identify the potential costs to, to close. Both of our, our sites have been closed technically, but there are still monitoring costs that occur annually, so we haven't done the adjustment for twenty-twenty, but each year you'll see that, that number change based on the amount of money we've spent on monitoring the, the closed landfills. So we kind of pick away at that liability as years go by. You'll see that lower each year.
And our ten-year capital assets, it's always the same, thirty-five million?
Uh, no.
It, it, it will change. I have not done the final year-end adjustments for twenty-twenty as yet, but it doesn't change a whole lot because we typically amortize about the same as much, we, we typically replace assets about the same amount as what we're amortizing them. So the number will change, but probably not drastically.
Okay, and are there?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
The last two items in the assets, they'll, they'll require a year-end adj, or a final adjustment yet. The investment in Rito's Cars and the investment in the port, once those audits are done?
That, that is correct.
Yeah.
They, they will both change, will they not, Madam Treasurer?
Yes, they will both change after, I don't have those numbers from either one of those entities.
Right now, the investment in the port is bringing in, we have to, the way the investment in the port works is that we have, of that thirty-six-million-dollar major investment in the Wharf infrastructure, we're only taking a little over three-million dollars a year into our investment, if I recall correctly, because that, that whole entire grant, it doesn't, as I understand it, that entire grant wasn't taken in all in the same year. Have I got that correct, or do I remember that correctly?
We did receive the money, but we still have a liability, the port still has a liability to ensure that that money has, has been spent, and it's, it's kind of a, a long-term thing where they have to continually, you know, as the asset's acquired, then, then they make an adjustment to the, to the amount of grant.
Right, okay.
Like a string attached, I guess you could say.
Yep. Okay, any other questions with this page forty-nine? Moving to page fifty, and on page fifty, we have the long-term debt schedule, and the only one, the only thing I just want to draw to your attention, and maybe to the treasurer we could get it included on the next one, but on the eighth one down, the Infrastructure Ontario Loan, that's the loan we took to modify the Johnstown Travel Center to an EMS station, and we borrowed quite a significant amount of money, but the payment is from the United Counties of Leeds and Grenble according to a twenty-year lease in place. So it's a lease payment paid by U C L G. And Madam Treasurer, can you tell us, it looks like their annual lease payment is about fifty-three thousand, is that correct?
Yeah, it's, it's actually fifty-four thousand even.
Fifty-four even, and then it looks like about fifty-three zero forty-five goes to the annual payments, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so are there any other questions with this sheet? You can see where we borrowed, where those loans are coming due, and if there's any questions, we'll put those questions to the treasurer. Hearing none, about to move on to the next page, which is page fifty-one of ninety-one, which is the Capital Project Status Report. Capital Project Status Report is as of December the thirty-first. Are there any questions with this report? See any questions there?
On, on page fifty-one, sir?
Page fifty-one of ninety-one, that's where I am. I have Deputy Mayor Deschamps.
Just one quick one, and I'm sorry I didn't clarify, through the mayor to the C A O, I'm sorry I didn't clarify before. I made my notes, and I, I didn't, I ran out of time to send it through an email, C A O, and I'm sure it's a simple, easy answer, but going to, it's the tandem axle snowplow truck, so it'd be thirty-nine, fifty-nine, fifty?
Thirty-nine?
Fifty-nine, fifty.
Got it.
The tender was two-fifty-two, the ending cost was two-sixty-three. They win the tender with two-fifty-two, why does it go up to two-sixty-three? I know it's still under budget, but I'm just, it's just for my own curiosity.
I'm not sure if the, if the treasurer has an answer on that right, right on the spot or not, or?
Yeah, that's why I meant to send it, sorry.
No.
I actually don't have a specific, it could have been that that number, the tender result number is pre-H S T, so there is a non-rebated H S T portion that might have bumped that two-fifty-two up to the two-sixty-three.
Okay, non-rebated.
Non-rebatably.
Right.
All right, if I may, I have to, can I go one more?
Yeah, go ahead.
So fifty-six, fifty-nine, fifty? Fifty-six, fifty-nine, fifty, which is the, what else we were relining? And it's the same question.
Yeah, so if, if I may, through the chair, there, there, there were some additional issues that arose with the, with the relining. There was, there was a small section of, of pipe that was, I, I believe, slightly smaller, which required some additional work to, to complete three-lining, which, which added to the cost.
Okay, so that went considerably over budget, that one?
It, it went about, it went about twelve thousand over.
Okay. Any other questions with this sheet? Hearing none, about to move to the next sheet, and the next sheet is fifty-two, which is the, an account of what we've been doing with the modernization funding. Now, and I, I just want to say I appreciate getting this report. Just to the C A O quickly, has this report at any time ever been shared with the M P P's office, or I should say the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, because that's where the funding originated? And I'm just wondering if we have at any time ever sort of sent this report to them so that they can see what we're doing with this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, not to my knowledge, but I'll just confirm that with the treasurer that that has not been submitted to.
You're, you're correct, C A O, we have not had a request, nor have we actually forwarded it on to the ministry.
No, I think what I'm going to look for is authorization for the mayor to submit this report directly to the minister, just as a sort of an interim report. Okay, I have Counselor, Deputy Mayor Deschamps moving, and I have Mr. Bradley seconding that a copy of this report be sent with thanks to the Minister of Municipal Affairs, sort of as an interim reporter. Deputy?
More of a comment, and through the chair to Mel, to the treasurer. Wonderful report, I like seeing how the dollars, you know, how they're being used and reading through them. I think it's exactly what municipal modernization dollars, you know, were, you know, meant to be used for. So it's excellent report.
Now, are there any?
Yeah.
First of all, I'm looking for authorization to make that motion move by Deputy Mayor Deschamps, seconded by Mr. Bradley. The intent of the motion is that the mayor will send a interim report to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, thanking him for our municipal modernization funding, and providing him with an up-to-date, as of December thirty-first, list of expenditures that we use to set ourselves up for the future. Can I get a, those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
I'm going to declare that motion carried, and I'll just ask staff to, I'll just ask staff to draft the letter, and now to back to the report itself, are there any questions with the report itself? So hearing none, I'm now going to move to number five on the, on the briefing note, which is the pre-audit reserve and reserve fund report, giving the balances as of December the thirty-first, twenty-twenty, and that would be on page fifty-three of ninety-one, although it doesn't seem to be a numbered page, but it is fifty-three. So is there, are there any, is there any discussion with this report? As I think, I think everyone can see that, have a look here, everyone can see that, you know, we've, we've used a good chunk of money from the report. I think the main money being taken out of reserve is the hundred-and-seventy thousand for the fire department vehicle, it's a significant expenditure, and then two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars taken out of the reserves, I believe that was for roadwork, was it not, Mr. C A O? The two-hundred-and-sixty thousand?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And then a hundred-and-twenty-three, a hundred-and-twenty-two came out of the modernization fund, and a hundred-and-eighty-nine came out of the O C I F formula-based fund. So it looks as though we will end the year about two-hundred-thousand dollars in our, two-hundred-thousand dollars ahead in our reserves of where we started the year, if I've got it right. So are there any comments here? Hearing none.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Bradley, Mr. Roberts.
Roberts, yeah. There's still missing information again, of course. The industrial park water, Johnstown water, still to come, all right, so yes, and the, the surplus or deficit of whatever shows up in the Cardinal Water Works water, as we go along, so there's, and we haven't made any transfers out, so there's probably going to be quite a few changes.
So, so through the C A O to the, to the treasurer, there's still a number of adjustments to come here?
Yes, typically, because especially more so in the bottom half, in the, in the fund section, because typically with the fund policy, reserve fund policy, I bring forward a report after year-end, after the auditors have done their review of all the financials, to determine the surplus and deficits in each of the water, wastewater systems, as well as the overall township surplus or deficit. And once that report is brought to committee and then approved at council, there'll be further adjustments to the, to the reserve schedule.
Okay, so we can expect to see some changes here. All right? So I'm, I'm now complete with item thought seven E, and I'm going to ask for a motion that that report be received and reviewed. Have Counselor Cameron moving, and does he have a second here? Mr. Bradley, those in favor, received and reviewed, motion is carried, thank you. And so now I'm at seven F, which is the fourth quarter budget variance report, and you see the briefing note on page fifty-four, and I will ask you to note that there is a recommendation in the briefing note at the second bullet point. Winter control expenses are under budget by seventy-three thousand, six hundred, and staff recommends that some of the savings be transferred into the winter control reserve for use in future years where expenses may exceed budget due to a harsher weather. Now, that recommendation comes in, against a background that they're expecting a pre-audit surplus, surplus of about three-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand. So first of all, are there any questions with the briefing note in front of you, or with the variance report on pages fifty-five, fifty-six, and fifty-seven? So I don't hear any questions?
Mr. Mayor, like, with that second bullet point, I don't, I don't, it's not clear to me at least, whether it's a portion of the seventy-three thousand, six hundred, or it's a portion of the three-hundred thousand surplus.
Okay, so through the C A O to the treasurer, you're recommending that some of the savings, now is that the winter control expense savings or the total overall savings? And can, would staff care to make us, make us a, a, a number recommendation?
Certainly, through the chair, it's actually the savings within winter control budget itself, not the overall three-eighty-one. The reason why this isn't actually in an action item is that I would prefer to bring it forward when we actually have a number, a final number at the end of, of the, after audit, of the, of the full surplus. There's other things besides, you know, there's a number, the fifth bullet down about the work-in-progress costs, those still need to, that action item is, is, has to be brought forward to, 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 to committee, to, to review, is further down in the, in the agenda. So there's a lot of other things that still need to be adjusted on the pre, pre-audit surplus of three-eighty-one. So right now, I'm not actually making a recommendation, I, I apologize for using the term recommend, but it's not actually a staff recommendation at this point in the, in the time, but it is only on the cost savings within the winter control budget.
Okay, so can we take it as, as a warning that there will be a recommendation?
Yes, with my, with my final report, I would bring forward as a recommendation specific.
Okay, very good, very good. Now- Now, so then I can turn my attention to.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question before we move on. On page fifty-five of ninety-one, about the tenth item down, year-to-date, it says building, and it says a hundred and three thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars. But if you go back over to page thirty-eight of ninety-one, it shows permit fees there of a hundred and thirteen thousand one twenty-two. Would that not be the same, we talking apples and apples there?
Certainly, that is an adjustment that needs to be made. We have to try to reconcile between what the building department has. Sometimes what they do in their system is not paid for. So we have to set up the receivable for the, for the difference between the one oh-three and the one thirteen. That is not.
Thank you.
Good catch, Mr. Robertson, thank you. Any other questions with this, Counselor Hunter?
I don't really have a question, but just a statement there when the staff is saying we're probably going to have a seventy-three thousand dollar budget in winter control expense. Hope we'd get a recommendation coming forward once it's all done. The amount we'd be putting back into that would be equal to what we had to take out of it the year before. The year before, we were over by a hundred thousand pretty near, and I think we took forty, forty thousand, I think we drew out that reserve that we should be putting, if we got a surplus that money should go back. I think we had it set to stay at a, was it a hundred or a hundred and twenty thousand built up?
We do have a maximum on there that we should be putting the money back, because we were at our max, I think, until we had to draw out, so we just, I think we should be putting that money back over and, and that saves taxing for twenty thousand dollars
within taxes this year to build the reserve there.
So the, so the gist of Counselor Hunter's comment is that the recommendation that would come forward would, would recommend sufficient transfer into that reserve to, to build it back to the number that we, that we had identified in our policy statements? That, that what you're saying?
Well, we should put back in, and if, if we've had a more surplus here than what we took out last time, I think we should be putting an equal, equal amount of that surplus back into rotation, so. But we were hard enough one year, we got lucky last year, so.
Okay. Any other comments with regard to this? Go ahead.
Does, through you to the C A O, does the, does the bylaw allow us to do, to do that? If, whatever the seventy-three is, if we wanted to put the seventy-three back in to winter reserves, does it allow us to do that directly, or does it have to somewhere else?
So I, I, I believe that typically the, any surplus is divided up and put into the, into the reserve and reserve funds, if I'm not mistaken, is that, is that correct, Treasurer?
Yes, you're correct, C A O, that, and all of those reserves, it's actually council's decision how that to split. There is usually a recommendation from staff to bring forward. And, and typically, we put them, put the money within capital. But as, as Counselor Hunter has suggested, we did remove a pile, a bunch of money when we had a deficit in our snow, snow winter control in one year. And so, you know, would be staff's recommendation to put some money back into that reserve in order to make sure that, you know, if we're hit again with another harsh winter, that we have money set aside as a contingency.
Okay, so I, I think you can, I think you've heard the discussion as to what the preferred, the preferred recommendation would be. And if I can go back here, our balance in that account on the first of January was twenty. And are we already, in twenty-twenty, we transferred in forty? And that brought up to sixty, but what we don't know is what it was, let's say, in December of, of twenty-nineteen. We're talking about, we're talking about earmark reserves zero-one-three-five-two-one, are we not? Okay, so here what the recommendation is, I think you've heard the discussion. Are there any, is there any other, are there any other questions with pages fifty-five, fifty-six, or fifty-seven? Hearing none. Or fifty-eight? It's all part of the same report. And if there are no other questions with regard to this report, I'm going to ask for a motion that this report be received and reviewed. And I have a mover, please. I have a mover, please. Okay, I have Counselor Hunter moving. Mr. Bradley? So seconding.
I would second it.
Be pardon? Yeah, I got you, Mr. Robertson.
Thank you.
Let the report be received and reviewed, yeah, received and reviewed, those in favor? The motion is carried. And so now, I'm on page, I'm on page seven G, which is the twenty-twenty work in progress report. And that starts on page fifty-nine of ninety-one. And Treasurer gives us a good list of the projects that were basically budgeted for in twenty-twenty. And some of those projects are not complete. And we have a recommendation on page sixty that committee recommends that council direct the Treasurer to carry forward the funds for the work in progress projects as identified in this report in order that the work in progress projects continue to be funded in twenty-twenty-one. And so are there any questions, first of all, before I call for a mover and a second to action the recommendation? Questions, if any? Hearing none, looking for a mover and a second here, I have Deputy Mayor Deschamps moving. Does he have a second here? Counselor Dilabah seconding. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, those in fa, oh, Mr. Bradley?
No.
You're anticipating. Okay, those in favor, motion is carried. All right, and so now I'm on page, excuse me, I'm at item number seven I, which is the commuter transit pilot project. Whoa, no, sorry, I'm jumping too fast. H, which is the twenty-twenty-one cost of living in. And we do this sort of every year, and we base it on November, over November. What is it called? What's the source?
Omer's.
The Omer's source, yes, sorry. So there is a recommendation in front of us here. The council approves the cost of living increase for all full-time, non-union staff and council members of point nine-four percent retroactive to January one, twenty-twenty-one as per the Personnel Policy Bylaw twenty-fifteen-twenty-two and the Expense Reimbursement Policy Bylaw twenty-nineteen dash sixty-three. And the point nine-four percent is the November, over November, Omer's. So any discussion with regard to the briefing note? Hearing none. Looking for a mover and a second to action the recommendations. I have Deputy Mayor Deschamps moving, Counselor Cameron seconding. Further discussion, if any? Hearing none, I'm about to call a question, those in favor? Motion is carried. And I'm moving then to, now I'm at seven I, which is the commuter transit pilot project. And so you have the briefing note in front of you with a recommendation. And there's one thing that I want to bring to the attention of the, of the committee before we begin the discussion, and that is this. First of all, I, I'm going to tell you and express my concerns as Mayor that we don't get ourselves backed into operating a transportation system. I think you can see from our budget discussions that we have a lot of areas of service that we support and maintain with taxpayers' dollars. And roads are our main transportation responsibility at this point in time, and not transportation of individuals. And so we had some problems getting into this discussion in the first place because originally, we really didn't know whether to even participate in the discussions. But then we agreed that staff would participate. But if you read the recorder in times, you can see that there are certain counselors in Brockville that fully expect that if this transportation pilot project goes beyond a pilot project to a system of transportation between Brockville and Edwardsburg Cardinal, that the Brockville counselor expects all workers to have money in the game. Now, one of the things that concerns me at the present time, we have this recommendation in front of us. It's only, it's, it's for ten thousand dollars. But what we don't know is what the pilot project is going to look like. What are the riders going to pay? What direction are the, are the, are the, are the workers moving? Are they moving from the west to east to go to work? Or are they moving from the east to the west to go to work? Those are important factors. And so I would hope that council and the committee would, would want to have some sort of a, of an evaluation of what the pilot project is going to work, look like. Before we started cash flowing this money, I've got no problem with the recommendation as it sits, provided that it's subject to council approval of the details. But that's not part of the recommendation, it's just my concern as Mayor. So I open the floor to discussion, I'd like to hear your points of view. Counselor Dilabah, and is there anyone speaking after Counselor Dilabah?
I will.
Counselor Cameron, are there other speakers? Deputy Mayor Deschamps, are there other speakers? Okay, okay, Counselor Hunter, and are there other speakers? And Mr. Bradley will speak, and I'm looking for Mr. Robertson. Don't see his hand up yet.
I'll, I'll, I have something to say.
He will speak as well. All right, it looks like we'll start with Counselor Dilabah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, it's not just for workers, it's that we're trying to, what they're trying to do here, I believe, it's for other services. Seniors maybe have to go to the hospital in Brockville to see a specialist, et cetera, et cetera. So it's just not workers going east to the west. And as far as what we see, I agree with you a hundred percent. I like to see what, you know, what we're doing and what the initial price tag is. I think there is federal gas tax grant out there for transportation in municipalities.
We use them to build roads with.
I think there's additional federal gas tax for transportation. Above and beyond that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I, I do, I do believe that there is provincial gas tax available for a, a grant that way, but certainly not for pilot, certainly not for pilot, no doubt.
No, I'm not saying that for pilot, as we go down the road. So I, I think we should continue on, I think I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. Let's have a little bit of more insight on how they're doing it. But I'm all, I'm all in on it.
And Counselor Cameron?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I certainly concur with Counselor Dilabah as well. Is that, I do know that there is a need, especially between the elderly residents of Cardinal, to get to Brockville, where there seems to be a lack of transportation there. And that, that has come up to be several times at various, various locations. But what this report does not tell us is how are the stops and what not going to be, going to be laid out? Are they going to go to one stop and drop people off? And let, let them pick up cabs or buses or whatever within Brockville to take them to various places? Are they going to have staggered stops, and how many stops? And what is the, what is the, the route timing? Is it, is it down in the morning, back in the afternoon? Or is it going to be several, several trips back and forth at various times through the day? How many units are we talking about here? Like how many contracts you're going to put up buses or, or go along the program? So there, there does need to be a lot more information spread, spread forward. So that, that, all that being said, I, I would like to certainly see a little more, a little more information on this. And, and also too, I, I do not want to see our municipality involved in a transportation heavy program, let's, let's, let's put it that way. I don't know what other word I can use on that. So that's, that's my feeling. And summary, more, more information needed.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. I think, you know, going back to what you have said, Mr. Mayor, and to both of the counselors who have spoken already, there's a lot of questions and not a ton of answers in regard to, to this project. But I think the hope is that the project will, will bring forth some of those, some of those answers. Bigger ones for me, though, are, you know, Brockville already has a transit that they operate. It operates at a, at a pretty reasonable, or not a pretty reasonable, a pretty sizable deficit, I believe. Even with the user fees that are, that are attached to it. You know, I think we, at some point, you know, hopefully what the pilot project would show is what we can expect for, for users and, and what the cost would be. And to see if the cost would be reasonable enough to take on, you know, subsidizing it. Because it's certainly not going to pay for itself. I don't see any way, I mean, by the time you look at just the capital that you would have to put in in terms of, you know, bus shelters and signage, and then, and then the buses themselves. The capital expense there would certainly outweigh the revenue that's generated. So it, it's just whether or not, you know, it actually works and how it works. And I don't think we're going to have any of those questions until we know. My concern with, with the pilot project in general is that their attempt is that it's going to start April first. And, and if we find ourselves in the middle of a pandemic still on April first, running a six-month pilot project while, while we're still in lockdown and not really able to, to travel, you're certainly not going to capitalize on any tourism. You're not going to capitalize on, on a whole lot of, you know, just enjoyment trips. It would be strictly workers, which, which the report mostly focuses on. I don't think it's going to give you the fulsome report that, that, that we could get out of it. So I, I question the timing of, of actually even running the pilot in the first place. I certainly support the, the pilot, I'd like to see the results. I, I think the results will speak for themselves. And I think it's worth, a worthwhile investment to do that.
Counselor Hunter?
Well, like I stated, my opinion much before, before on this, I think it's a total waste of money. We all know what the answer is going to be when it gets done, there's no way it can support itself. Brockville couldn't support their own bus transit system, they're ready to shut it down, so they haven't had a huge grant to help buy buses to replace the ones they had. You're in a rural area, trying to go up and, up and down. As far as taking people, seniors to doctor's appointments and stuff, that's not going to be a start, because you've got doctors appointment certain times, there's no way you can run a bus. Only way that works is in a city where they run buses every fifteen minutes or something, coming back. And you, you go to any city, city not just Brockville, most buses are running empty eighty percent of the time, except at three o'clock and five o'clock, then you got workers that use them and stuff the rest of the time. But cities lose millions of dollars on these things. They're great, a great thing, it'd be wonderful if somebody willing to pay for it. As far as I'm concerned, it's just ten thousand dollars throughout for a bike dream, it's never going to happen. So I'm just totally against even being involved in it, so.
And Mr. Bradley?
Well, I've been through this a couple of times, and
Well, I've been through this a couple of times in this report. And as far as I'm concerned, this test study is worth a paper written on. I mean, for example, if you look at page 66, where is your business located? And there's probably 60, maybe 65% of the respondents are from the town of Prescott. There isn't enough data for one thing. There hasn't been any kind of a thorough study done, this is somebody's wish list as far as I'm concerned. Secondly, this is not the kind of service, in my view, that municipal taxpayers should be even thinking about. Okay, so, and workers, the workers that are traveling, this is going to go east-west on highway 2 or group 2. How are the workers getting to work today? How are the seniors getting into the hospital today? So, as far as I'm concerned, I won't vote for one penny on a project like this, under any condition. We don't have a clue of capital, we don't have a clue of operating expense, who's going to be the prime mover, and so on. So if these guys, whoever they are, the Ontario Leadership Council, want to stand up and start leading, they can come back with much more detail than what they've got in this thing. That's all I got to say.
Well, I think Ontario Leadership Council is just offering the grants, they're expecting the applications to come from proponents at the local level. I'm going to get to Mr Grant in a minute. Mr Grant has been part of the group that is going to be preparing the application. So I'll get to him in a minute, but let me just finish with this roster that I've got in front of me, and then we'll go on. So Mr Robertson, you're next.
I tend to agree with John Hunter. I, there are a number of organizations that provide transportation and, and they pay people actually. For instance, I drove for, for Canadian Cancer Society for 12 years, except that I didn't get paid for it. And not that it was never to Brockville, I mean, they were always Ottawa or Kingston or, out of town, but I agree, I, I think that it's money down the drain.
So this will go briefly to, to the CAO, and I, I believe the CAO and I have had some discussion about this. I'll speak after he speaks, so Mr Grant, who would please? Tell us what you know about this.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Chair. If you recall back in, in, in December, it was decided to, as, as time permits, to have staff participate with the city of Brockville, town of Prescott, and township of Augusta to try to work together with respect commuter transit pilot project. The, the Eastern Ontario Leadership Council issued the, sort of the RFP on, on January 14th. One of our, one of the first things that the group attempted to do was to see if the timeline could be extended, as we, we had identified a concern with respect to the, to the timing of a, of a test project during pandemic. It appears that they're looking, looking at that timeline and I, I don't think there's a great deal of, of flexibility. We're, we're, we're working through, still as a group, working through the a number of the logistics with respect to, you know, Monday to Friday, whether it's 7 days per week, but it sort of appears like it would be a, a Monday to, Monday to Friday. A, a run from west to east and then east, east to west and then a return later in the day, so one first thing in the morning and one sometime in the, in the afternoon, so.
And, and was there some discussion in your group of using the Brockville buses to, to do this project?
So, Mr Chair, yes, there, there appears like Brockville would have one, one bus available and for the, for, for the pilot project, it would just be the operating cost with respect to operation and maintenance of that bus, the bus driver, fuel.
So, that, so the concept as of this point in time was morning, morning run, afternoon run, west to east, morning run west to east and then back, afternoon run west to east and then back. And and operated by Brockville, Brockville's transit system. I've already had way too much experience in this business and lost way too much money in doing it, because we did it at the expense of our own company. And I just want to draw your attention to page 69 of 91. And let me first of all say that I'm with councillor Hunter and Mr Bradley and Mr Robertson, because I think we may tend to build up expectations that, that end up just plain not able to meet them, but if you look at page 69, there's four or five points here from people that responded to the survey that I think are really important. So about a, a third of the way up from the bottom, a lot would depend on the frequency of the commuting buses. We have several different shift times that would be, that would be possible, and they do rotate. So there you have it, a, a bus coming from Brockville to Georgetown, for example, may meet several different shift times at starting at Greenfield and at Prisby in a different shift, and at the ingredient in Cardinal, a different shift, so shift times are important. A commuter, then the third comment, a commuter service between Cardinal and Brockville will allow so many more people to be able to conduct their shopping, business, doctor appointments independently, without relying on neighbors, so now you get to the question, well, where does the run terminate? Does it terminate uptown Brockville, downtown Brockville, or does it service all of Brockville? And does it stop at the hospital or not stop at the hospital, and if it stops at the hospital at 10 o'clock, what good does that do me when my appointment was at 9, 9:45? You know, so really raising expectation. And then the most important one, I think, or is the comment that says, I think routes and times are key, so. Anyway, I don't want to go into this in a lot of detail, you can all read the briefing that you have in front of you, I have a recommendation in front of me, and I'm going to call for a mover and a seconder to action the recommendation. And I'm going to, one more time, add that the chair would like to see a condition put in that the contribution would be subject to council approval of the details of the pilot project. I think we should at least have a look at it. So, the most, the recommendation is on the floor?
Recorded vote thing?
Yep, when we get to it, first I need a mover and a seconder.
I'm going to move it.
Okay, I have Deputy Mayor Deshaun moving.
I'll second it, Mr Mayor.
And I have councillor Dilawah seconding. Now, is there any appetite for an amendment?
Absolutely.
Okay, so you're prepared to do the amendment?
Oh.
Or you're not, okay? So I'm not giving a
I'm not hungry now.
Have an apple, I just say you're ready to eat.
It says, subject to a successful grant, it, it does, it does, it does say that. But I, 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 I thought that we were going to go along with the amendment that you had just mentioned, that we had in there, subject to, I believe you said, pilot project.
Council approval of the details of the pilot project.
I thought that was the amendment you
Well, no, I, no, I can't, I'm, I'm suggesting an amendment, I can't put an amendment forward from the chairman.
I, okay. I would, I would, I would be more than happy to move that amendment, as worded by the mayor.
Okay, so does the, does councillor Cameron have a seconder for his amendment? So Deputy Mayor Deshaun will second the amendment, now I'm going to call a vote on the amendment. So the amendment would add the words, and subject to council approval of the details of the pilot project. That's the amendment, those in favor of the amendment? Okay, so I, okay, 1, 2, 3, 4. So 4, I got 4 in favor, oppose the pending, so I have 2 opposed, where's Mr Robertson? Oh, 4 to 3, the amendment passes. So I'll declare the amendment carried and part of the main motion. Now, I'm going to call the question on the main motion as amended. And, and Mr Bradley has asked for a recorded vote. So I'm going to attempt to do a recorded vote, just give me one second to get my little chart ready. Okay, so, calling the question on the motion as amended. Those in favor, oh, I have to call the names. Councillor Dilawah, how do you vote?
Yay.
Councillor Cameron, how do you vote?
Yay.
Councill, CAO votes nay. Deputy Mayor Deshaun, how do you vote?
Yay.
Councillor Hunter, how do you vote?
Nay.
Mr Bradley, how do you vote?
Nay.
And Mr Robertson, how do you vote?
Nay.
Now, I have 4, I hope the vote is 3 to 4, 3 in favor and 4 against. Now that's against the recommendation, or it's against the motion, and all the aspects of the motion. So the recommendation, actually, here's the question that I've been asked before in a hypothetical way, and I don't know how to answer it. The recommendation was that committee recommends that council, A, B, and C. So the committee has voted not to recommend to council, that's what has happened here. So the committee has voted 3 in favor, 4 against, making this recommendation to council, now the next question becomes, does this recommendation go to council without the recommendation of the committee? Or does it fail to get to the council table? And I need some talk about that, because I don't know that that specific situation is addressed in our, in our, in our procedural bylaw, so I'm going to turn to the, to the clerk, through the CAO, to the clerk. Can the clerk tell us, if a recommendation fails at the committee level, does it get to the council table, or does it fail to get to the council table?
Through the chair, in these cases with committee of the whole, they do go to council and they just don't receive the as recommended by committee of the whole. So it will be, it will appear at the February council meeting again.
Do you know, in what format does it appear on the council agenda? Does it appear in the format as originally recommend, recommended by staff? Or does it appear in the format that was defeated by committee of the whole?
Through the chair again, the amendment carried. So in our terms, we would generally include the amendment for the council resolution recommendation, however it is council's final decision as to if they accept it or make another amendment.
Okay, so the, the clerk's advice and interpretation of our procedural bylaw is that the recommendation does come to the council table without the recommendation of the committee, and then council makes the final decision. Everybody understand the process? Okay.
It doesn't have committee approval.
Doesn't have committee approval.
Happened once already.
Okay.
So, did I ask you, Gosh, Mr Mayor?
Yep.
If that is the kind of rule that will be followed in the procedures and under the municipal act?
No, it's not under the act, it's strictly our procedural bylaw.
Okay, under the procedural bylaw. Why would Mr Robertson and I even have a vote?
Well, I mean, you're the same as any other member, we all have a vote. We, we all have a vote here, there's only 5 of us have a vote there.
But, in this particular case,
They won't be at the council.
We, we don't vote at the council.
That's correct.
So the 5 members of council will come back and the committee defeated the motion, but the council will approve the motion.
Well, unless somebody changes their mind.
I agree, but, so it's counterproductive for Mr Robertson and I to have a vote.
Not necessarily.
Why not?
Well, because that's just the system.
Well, it's just a formality.
Shows that I had some backing.
In, in, in fairness, though, Mr Bradley, like, we, we were, we were elected to do, you know, to make the decisions.
I understand.
And, and we're the ones that, you know, have to, you know, suffer the public scrutiny for, for that. And, and it, and when it comes to community members being on our committees, it, it invokes thoughtful conversation and, and certainly discussion and, and ideas from all different directions, and that's what, and that's what it's for, I mean, ideally, whether we agree or disagree, doesn't matter.
I agree with you, but I'm not talking about debating, I'm talking about voting. And I was, I sat on this committee for over 2 years, probably 3 years, before we were even given the opportunity to vote.
Yep.
We didn't vote.
That's right.
And it was fine by me, I didn't mind that, okay? But, and I participated in the debate, and I think that's the important part. And the fact that we vote is irrelevant to me, okay, because I'm not elected.
Right.
So I, I, I agree with your
Yeah.
your concept and, you know, the statements that you made. So, like, I would be happy to forego my vote, my power to vote.
Well, don't do that, because it, it, it creates a, it creates a, it creates a process. I mean, it's a good process, I mean, doesn't matter how you look at it. This, this motion is going to go, but it's going to go without committee recommendation. Because of you two, no, not because of you two, because of your participation. And because councillor Hunter and I did not have the power by yourselves.
The fact, Mr Mayor, you know, that's meaningless.
No, not really meaningless, I appreciate your
The fact that, the fact that the committee didn't approve it is meaningless with respect to committing that then bring it.
I, I see your point, but councillor Hunter?
Well, I think, I think you're right, Mr Brad, Bradley. But the point, point of you having a vote is and getting turned down, down here, and, and you can say, yeah, go to pass, or maybe it won't go to pass, but but if it's a close vote in the committee, it go, goes to council, these are, these committees are being recorded here. The council's going to get feedback, that members turned that, turned it down, or voted in favor of, of something, something there. And, and it's, if it was here and we were the only ones that voted, yous couldn't vote tonight, 4 councillors voted in favor of it. Basically, it's saying, saying to the public, what did it bother? That was just a council, the council's already passed it, this is just rubber stamping it, when it goes to the next. At least this way, it, it shows that the committee's working, you, you voiced the appeal to the public. It also gives other councillors a chance to get feedback back from the public and, and maybe one of them does change their mind, because maybe somebody watches the video here and hey, I agree with you guys, that shouldn't have, you guys shouldn't have been voting for, spending my money that way, so. Okay, give it a break. Basically, once the brakes on for a minute and, and that second thought.
Well, thank you.
It's the same for many people and stuff, it's determined by the time.
Okay, so what I'm going to do, gentlemen and ladies, I'm going to say that that concludes the, that portion of the agenda. I've got item number 8 on the agenda, which is council inquiries or notices of motion. And does anyone have anything to bring forward there? Other than myself?
I don't.
Okay, anybody else? All right, well, I, I'm just, again, All right, well, I'm just, again, and I'm bringing it forward again one more time, reminding council that I did serve notice of motion, that at some point, uh, we will, um, be, and it'll probably be, in all likelihood, the council meeting at the end of the month, uh, be bringing forward the motion, uh, to deal with, uh, the resources that we will require, uh, to, um, to execute our plan with regard to the ten thousand acres from, um, Infrastructure Ontario, should those negotiations, uh, go anyplace in the next three weeks before the end of the month. So last notice is a motion, uh, does anyone else have anything? Bring number one, okay, Counselor, okay, got Counselor and then Mr. Bradley?
Uh, just for a timeframe date, last, uh, committee meeting, uh, council meeting, I noticed that I wouldn't be bringing a notice of motion forward to do away with the municipal warrant system in the township. I'll put it on record, I will be bringing that motion forward for the council meeting in May, twenty-one.
In May? That gives us lots of time.
Yeah.
Mr. Bradley?
Uh, could we set some dates for the next budget meeting?
Did, I think we did, but I'm not sure.
I'm missing it.
We only have one more.
Apparently, in the, the next budget meeting is February eighteenth.
But we didn't set two, though.
We, we, we did not.
Yeah. We need to set, we need to set one.
Eighteenth of February?
Eighteenth of February, chat? We got that?
No, I think, I think, no.
I didn't have it.
It's not a ten.
Week from Thursday. So Robertson, have you got it, February the eighteenth is the next budget meeting?
February eighteenth at six-thirty?
Yeah, yes.
And the next one after that?
I've got set it at this moment.
Oh, okay, so.
Uh, let me ask the question, um, is, is the staff, well, let me ask, yeah, I'll, I'll ask the question to CAO. As a result of our last budget meeting, uh, which was budget meeting number four, are you, um, are you feeling that you will have things tight enough wrapped together to, um, bring things to finality on the eighteenth? Or are you anticipating that, uh, another budget meeting will be required?
Uh, through, through the chair, I, I am anticipating, uh, one more budget meeting after, after number five to, hopefully, uh, wrap up the, the budget.
Okay, and did we want to set a date for that while we're all here? Uh, if we do want to set a date for it, can you, uh, I know after these budget meetings, you've got, uh, as well, council to prepare for on the twenty-second, uh, so you wouldn't want anything, uh, well, you would probably be looking someplace during the week of March the first, but I'm not sure that that's what you'd be looking at. Can I, can I suggest that maybe, uh, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, March first, second, or third? Not, not for you?
No, I'm, I'll be working.
The treasurer's saying no.
Shaking no as well?
Yes.
I have, I have the auditors here that entire week.
Okay, and then my next week, which is the eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, is full of county, uh, except for afternoons and evenings.
So if I, if I may, you know, Mr. Chair, potentially, uh, depending on what is, um, left after, a- after budget meeting number five, we may be able to wrap that up as part of the mid-finance on, on, on March eighth.
Well, would it finance be March eighth?
Mm-hmm. Yes, definitely.
And is, can I, can I put, uh, CDC then for March one, is that?
Yep. That, that was correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Your orders will be...
And then six-thirty would, and council would be the twenty-second again.
That, that is correct.
Okay, so, uh, let's call it then, uh, March the eighth for mid-finance and budget number five.
Budget number six.
Oh, yeah, budget number six. Okay, all right, that fills that one in. Okay, so I'm on to item number nine, which is the mayor's report, just a couple of things. Uh, first of all, I'll just read this because I think it's important, uh, council. So this just came from Anne Weir, uh, at five-thirty-nine this afternoon, and this is a media release from the province. Ontario names Newmark, that's the company name, as the site selector for Canada's first job site challenge. And I'm gonna read the press release, because I think it's important, and we are, the meeting's being recorded.
Please tell Newmark, please.
N, uh, N E W, M A R K. The province, the heading is Province Ready to Attract Advanced Manufacturing Investments. The Ontario government has recruited an internationally recognized commercial real estate and corporate site selection firm, Newmark, to support the delivery of Canada's first Job Site Challenge. The Job Site Challenge is Canada's first mega-site program modeled after successful mega-site programs in many U.S. states that were designed to attract large-scale investments in automotive and advanced manufacturing. Municipalities, economic development agencies, and industrial property owners put forward large tracts of industrial lands of five hundred to fifteen hundred acres that could support large-scale manufacturing operations. The challenge has received nineteen applications from across the province. Newmark was selected for the Job Site Challenge because of the company's knowledge and expertise in corporate location strategy, foreign direct investment, global footprint realignment, and providing comprehensive real estate services and consulting tailored to the industrial and, and advanced manufacturing lifecycle. Notable past clients include global companies in the automotive, aerospace, life science, semiconductor, consumer products, and other advanced manufacturing sectors. Leading the Newmark team for the challenge, Job Site Challenge is Greg Wassmann-Dorf, Senior Managing Director with Newmark's Global Consulting Practice. He is the first and only Canadian member of the world's top association for site selection professionals, namely, the Site Selecters Guild, and an executive member of its board of directors. Quotation, "The mega-site brings new opportunities for long-term investment that can create thousands of good-paying, direct and indirect jobs throughout the industrial supply chain to benefit communities across the whole province," said Vic Fidelli, Minister of Economic Development, Jogitation, and Trade. Quotation continued, "Now more than ever, the challenge acts as an important investment attraction initiative for Ontario's economic recovery and for restarting the province's economic engine." New paragraph, "The Job Site Challenge strengthens Ontario's economic competitiveness as the province competes for major manufacturing investments. The program will equip the province with an inventory of shovel-ready mega-sites to support economic recovery." New quotation, "Hiring a site selector, selector is an important next step for the Job Site Challenge," said Pramit Sarkaria, Associate Minister of Small Business and Red Tape Reduction. Quotation continued, "Greg and the Newmark team have a solid track record for choosing the right communities and sites to meet the needs of major companies." The Job Site Challenge also builds on the success of the province's existing investment-ready certified site program, which pre-qualifies smaller industrial province properties across the province. So that's just announced today, and as we learned from Minister Sarkaria, now that Newmark has been selected, they will then spend the period between now and July reviewing and evaluating the top ten sites, which are to be announced sometime in the next few days following this announcement, they're gonna announce the ten sites that are in the top ten.
Mr. Mayor, is that public, uh?
Yes, I'll circulate this, I just got an electronic copy from Mr. Grant, I'll circulate...
Do you know if it will be in the papers or in, on the Ontario government website or anything like that?
Well, it's on the Ontario government website now.
Okay.
Now, when it gets to the papers is a different story.
Yeah.
Did, did Anne get it from them directly? Or was it something that she found on the website? I'm just curious that they...
Yeah, and I don't know the answer to that, but, you know, I haven't been home long enough to look at my, uh, stuff at home, but I get these, uh, Ontario, uh, I get them regularly, but I don't know whether this one is there or not. Uh, but actually, I'm quite excited, because that's a good step now.
Do we know, do we, do Mr. have the nineteen, uh?
They haven't said who they are.
Okay.
But...
So they're gonna announce the ten that's in the running?
Yeah.
When this guy starts, in another week or so, is that what you're saying?
They've announced them now, and they indicated when we met with Sarkaria during the Roma Conference, the, it, he indicated that they would be announcing the top ten, that following this announcement, they will announce the top ten.
So these guys won't be doing nineteen of them, they're only gonna do ten of them?
That's correct.
Ten, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're a big outfit.
It's important, I think, to know who the ten are, because, you know, then it'll give you some insight.
Well, we will know who they are, right away.
Give you some insight into the political connections and stuff, that's right.
Now, as I've indicated, I think our next step, and, you know, I, I, I can't say this, other than, you know, the, the deputy mayor, uh, who else was present on the call with Minister Sarkaria, just, just you and I?
Just us.
And, and CAO. Let me put it this way, Minister Sarkaria...
It is, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, just to interrupt, but, uh, name's Newark, uh, as site selector. So it is on the Ontario's.
Yeah, so, uh, Minister Sarkaria, of course, can't pre-announce his announcement, but let me put it this way, uh... My, uh, level of confidence that we will be in the top ten is, uh, is considerably increased after our discussion, but that doesn't mean much. You know, nickels and dimes takes money to buy whiskey. Right, John?
Yes.
But when the announcement comes, the announcement comes. Now, one other thing that I want to just make as part of my mayor's report, I had, uh, a call from, uh, John Witherspoon of HFI Pyrotechnics, and I just wanted to share some good news. Uh, so you'll recall that, uh, we went through about a two-year process where HFI Pyrotechnics was trying to get to be part of the, of the, uh, Canada's supply chain, uh, for munitions of this type. And, uh, they were successful. Now, at the time, uh, that we celebrated their success with the, uh, with the presentation down at HFI Pyrotechnics, he indicated at the time that they would probably add ten to fifteen people of, to their employment roster. And he said things have just progressed in leaps and bounds since then. They've now added thirty new people, they are at a hundred and eight employees now, which is leaps and bounds over the thirty-five that they were at just a few years ago. They have a full roster of orders that will take them way beyond September twenty-twenty-one. They've hired a new Director of Business Development. This year, they will double their revenue, uh, and they're working on two major new projects, which they've been asked to provide expressions of interest to the Canadian, uh, government. Uh, he wasn't saying too much about what these two projects were, other than to say that his site, uh, is ideal for the right type of work that he's being asked to quote on. So I think there's more to come from HFI Pyrotechnics, and looking forward to hearing more from him. And needless to say, one of his main interests was land, additional land, because he wants to get himself further isolated, and, uh...
You could spot it, we got a talk for him.
Well, if we can get...
We got land in Arizona.
Well, if we get this ten thousand acres, I know of at least three pins that he's gonna be very interested in.
He's got protection, and those pins very sound, so.
Yeah, well, what that amounts to, I'm not sure. Okay, so I'm at the end of the agenda, it is question period, I know that we're not being live streamed, so there are no questions from the public. Uh, we have no closed session tonight, the chair's looking for the motion to adjourn. Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Cameron moves to adjourn, and, uh, the deputy...
Oh, I said, make me do it.
Those in favor?
Make me do it.
Motion is, uh, carried.